Good evening and welcome. And we are really privileged this evening to have special guests with us, not just Ridgway. Welcome Ridgway.
Woo!
I always love Ridgway, always comes out for us too. It's fantastic. Good to see everybody. But we also have special guests from Troop 73. And welcome. And we would like to invite Sedant Rowan and Cedric to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The mission of the White Plains Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world.
I'd like to ask you to join us in a moment of silent reflection as we remember Audrey Corolo, clerk typist, pre-kindergarten in Highlands, 1973 to 1992, and Janet Druck, security guard, teaching assistant at White Plains High School, 1989 to 2013.
Thank you. Next, we'll have comments, brief comments from the board. Any comments?
I'll mention a few things. So I got to go to the Highlands performance of Lion King Jr., which was really wonderful. It was great to see the students back on stage. I had been to the high school performance of Little Shop of Horrors, and now to be at the middle school was just wonderful. Congratulations to the performers, the cast, the crew, the staff, and all the parents who really made that possible. The advocates for the earth at the high school did a fashion show, and they also highlighted the exploitation of workers in the fashion industry and negative environmental consequences of the fashion industry. And there were multicultural performances, so that was also a really worthwhile event. PTA Council sponsored social media and internet safety. They brought in a speaker from New York's finest, retired detective Thomas Grimes, and he spoke to parents one night at the high school, one night at the middle school, and also presented to the students. And it was really a powerful presentation and quite chilling, I have to say. Saturday, I had the honor, and Rose Lovich was there as well, to go to Ridgway. They had Autism Acceptance Day play date at their playground, and there was just a crowd of people there, parents and kids, all having a wonderful time on the playground. There were resources for parents, and there was a mascot, and there was slime, and there was dancing, and you know, fitness, and all sorts of great things. And so I really want to thank the Ridgway PTA and the special needs co-chairs who really put that together.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. A number of us got to march in the St. Patrick's Day parade, Jim and Kane, Charlie, and myself. And before I forget, please excuse Charlie for this meeting, he is traveling. He is in Rome. So I'm sure we all understand. But we did march in the parade even through the rain, and Kane also brought his son and marched with us a little.
Half with you.
Yeah, 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 yeah. But it was a good time. It was a good time for all. And PTA Council, as always, I love, love, love being there, and I thank, thank, thank you on behalf of the board. We will never ever say that enough, and we will say that every time. And lastly, I was very fortunate to be invited to be on a webinar as part of the panel for Culturally Responsive Education CRE. Natalie Zerweger, I hope I'm pronouncing her name right, she did a lot of our equity work. She was actually, she actually guided us through the process where we drafted our equity policy. She's the executive director at the Center of Peace and Equity in Education. But she asked me to participate on this panel, and it was just so, it was such an honor for me to be there and represent White Plains and all the good things that we do in our classrooms to be culturally responsive. So I appreciate everything you all do, and I was also honored to be part of that panel where she thought coming to White Plains for a panelist was the thing to do. Thank you.
If I could just add, along the lines of equity, many of us were invited to attend the National Junior Honor Society induction later in the month, and I think we're honoring about 120 students. But a few parents had reached out, and I noticed as well that we are requiring students if they wanted to purchase a sash for $20. So I thought, you know, part of our equity work, if we could look at eliminating that barrier for all those students that we're honoring would be something, you know, in the right, step in the right direction in terms of where we're going at least. So, and I know I reached out to Dr. Ica this morning, and I was saying, yeah, six o'clock this morning, I was hoping that, you know.
We solved that problem before seven.
Did we though? Okay.
Actually, I don't remember a lifetime ago ever having to pay for a sash.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's good, thank you.
Thank you Kane.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, thank you, everyone. Next, we'll move to the superintendent's report.
Well, thanks so much. And you know, we joke about this, but you know, Dr. Lutze, whether it's Dr. Lutze or whether it's anybody, any time of the day, you all are always so plugged in and connected to everything that's going on with our children, and really do appreciate that, that open and collegial relationships that we are able to address. Because look, nobody thought about that, you know, $20 and thought, hey, this is, you know, gonna be a problem or not gonna be a problem. It was just probably something that just always was. And so now we'll be able to correct that, rectify it, and hopefully that has changed somebody's outlook, you know, for their kid who was maybe worried about how they were going to be able to, if they were going to be able to purchase that important sash, right? You achieve that distinction, that's something you should bear that mark of recognition. So again, thank you to Troop 73 for being with us this evening, and thank you, troop master and parents, for accompanying them. I also want to yield a portion of my time right now to our student representatives who are here with us despite just having won a softball game moments ago. But thank you very much ladies, come on up.
Good evening, Dr. Ica, Board of Ed members and community with us today. My name is Sophia Emmert, and I serve as the co-secretary along with Solis at White Plains High School, the student government. And we are here today to provide an update on any major events and/or activities taking place at each of our schools. So we'll start off with Church Street. Church Street School Buddies helped to acknowledge Autism Awareness Month by creating a video to share with the student body during morning announcements about autism and how students can ensure that they're being inclusive. During Spirit Week, they collected 400 pairs of socks for a local shelter. And this week, Church Street School welcomed the author Angela Dominguez for a virtual visit with our K-2 students, and they would like to thank the PTA as well for helping to make this possible. For Mamaroneck Avenue, they celebrated Empathy Month in March and currently focused on responsibility for the month of April. As the Karen Community, MAS launched Cards for Kids. Students across the school are sending cards of encouragement, hope, and kindness to children in Ukraine, and it's a great way for teachers to use this activity to teach empathy, compassion, and responsibility. And as an entire school, MAS implemented Zones of Regulation. So Zones are used to teach self-regulation by labeling all the different ways we feel and the states of alertness that we experience in the four zones. They teach, the curriculum provides strategies to teach students to become more aware of their emotions. And for the next three months, they'll be super busy. They said that they're scheduling lots of class trips, concerts, and end-of-year activities, including graduation. And then for Post Road, they had their March in Women's History Month and Music in Our Schools Month. So they celebrated Women's History Month with recorded presentations made by their students, which were shared daily during morning announcements. And their music department helped them to celebrate Music in Our Schools Month, which they featured women who have made significant contributions to music. And the children learned about the featured artists and listened to their music. And each week, there was a theme, so they had Pop Around the World, the Caribbean and Mexico, Jazz and Musical Icons. They also have their Spirit Week coming up, and World Down Syndrome Day. They celebrated this on March 21st by rocking their socks. So the students and staff wore bright mismatched socks to celebrate and honor differences. They also did that at the high school, I know, which was really fun. And then for Ridgway, they had a wonderful and largely attended play date, as mentioned before, on April 2nd at their playground. And they also have an upcoming pep rally scheduled for April 6th, and students are going to be recognized for being kind, learning about new character traits of the month, and other fun secrets. So I'm gonna pass this off to Solis now.
Hi, everyone. So for Eastview Middle School, we have, they're currently in the process of ELA exams today and tomorrow. And on Thursday, April 7th, students in both 6th and 7th grade will participate in an author's workshop, Jerry Craft. Jerry Craft will be virtually visiting Eastview Middle School, sharing his graphic novel, New Kid. The Eastview Humanity Project and the PTA have arranged for Jared Campbell to perform at Eastview on Friday, April 8th. Jared Campbell is an award-winning singer-songwriter from upstate New York whose music impacts the lives of listeners by experiencing joy, finding comfort through pain, and looking past obstacles towards living a better life. As well, Highlands Middle School is also in the process of ELA exams today and tomorrow. And on the week of March 18th, Highlands had a great turnout for their production of The Lion King Jr. Students are thrilled to have a maskless option as well. White Plains High School, last week, we had a portfolio exhibition week where our students shared their art and creativity with the school community. It was amazing throughout the halls, a lot of beautiful, like, artists and creativity. And then also, on March 25th, all juniors were invited to attend junior prom, which Sophia and I attended. This is the first time we returned to a pre-pandemic junior prom event, which is very exciting to be back in person, and we would like to thank all the volunteers and administration for putting this amazing night together. We would like to congratulate our nine Science Research Award recipients on their success at the Regeneron Westchester Science and Engineering Fair. Benjamin Goldman, Isabel John, Melissa Soto, Myla Bridges, Alexander Garcia, Sarah Sagner, Jenna Lombino, Antonia Di Mara, and Sean O'Donnell. We are excited to welcome our newest Tiger Parents this Thursday, April 7th, as we host our 8th grade parent orientation. And later this month, we are looking forward to our NHS induction ceremony on Thursday, April 21st, and our Night of Talent, our very popular talent show, is on the 22nd, and our Underclassmen Award Ceremony is on Tuesday, April 26th as well. And for Rochambeau, their Career Day will be taking place this Friday. They have more than 20 professionals that will be participating in this event, and they also have a student, Jose Moret, who is studying to become a barber and will be one of their presenters as well. And we would like to also highlight their Director's Challenge winners for March, Darian Page, Katrina Dandridge, James Jaden Lutazaka, Richard Ramirez, John Dominguez, Louis Ramirez, and Ashley Aquendo. And Rafael Cristomo Camros, and Kevin Mendoza, and Naomi Garcia Santiago. These students will be invited for a special luncheon coming up soon. March highlighted achievements in the areas of English Science and American Sign Language for Rochambeau. And that is it. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
Solis and Sophia, if you could just now give the budget presentation real quick. I think you always do such a tremendous job. I want to thank you so much. I love how we have integrated this full holistic 360 look at the district, and I just want to once again echo everybody's praise and thank you. And also thank you very much for not only getting here right after your game, but also winning today. Congratulations. So the ladies really did, they covered like almost everything else I was gonna talk about real quick. I do want to just draw attention, it is National Assistant Principals Month, week, month, I'm calling it month. Big thank you to all of our assistant principals, and I know we're recognizing them in our buildings as well. Also, just in case you don't know or you haven't seen it yet, we are, we, the city of White Plains is presently hosting a wonderful, a wonderful traveling exhibit of Harriet Tubman. And the school district will be utilizing the sculpture while it's here in the city to give and bring opportunities to our students, both to visit it and study. But if you haven't yet had a chance to go see it, it really is, it's tremendous.
It's at the corner of Mamaroneck Avenue and Main Street.
And we have it until June.
Yep.
Powerful. It's a really powerful, beautiful.
It's a beautiful, beautiful, beautiful artwork.
Post Road's having Spring Fest. It's coming up in a couple of weeks, and for anyone who was wondering, Superintendent for a Day is making its dramatic return at Post Road Spring Fest too, so that'll be exciting, and I'm looking forward to that. We also have, of course, Spring Recess next week, and I do want to take just a moment to wish everybody who's celebrating a holiday, I hope you have a great holiday. We hope you have a great holiday. For those who are celebrating Ramadan now, those who celebrate Passover, Easter, enjoy it, enjoy the time with your family, and have hopefully some time to rest as well. I also, this evening, just transition. Never ever lose that classroom fun, the classroom teacher, right? Like, hey, how you doing? Oh, come on in. We have a very, extraordinary budget that we are presenting for the community's consideration in May, May 17th. Not only does the budget continue to achieve all of our goals and objectives via the long-range plan, it also brings with it some really exciting changes, as Mrs. Brumer just reminded me moments ago. And, no, and you're right to do it, Sue, because it does. It has some amazing opportunities for our students, great opportunities for growth, and it also does it with a zero tax increase. So no tax increase. And you know, that was something we had been talking about for years. If we were able to successfully advocate for fully funding foundation aid, that then we would be able to do even more to be able to change some of the burden on taxpayers. We're doing that with this year's budget. So hopefully you find that exciting and you can support that. The other items that are going to be on the ballot this year are equally as exciting. We have our ventilation, filtration, and air conditioning upgrades district-wide, right? Every building, every room in the district will be climate-controlled and efficient. If you're a kindergartner right now, that's very exciting. If you're a senior right now, it's less so. But it does, it does bring with it, again, really good news for the future. There are renovations and improvements associated with Phase 1 of our capital plan, 71.4 million, tax-neutral. I know. It's that, it's that exciting, I mean, you know, you just don't see it. You don't see it. Well, okay, Joe, how? By utilizing debt that's coming off from previous bonds, we're able to fund these projects without increasing the tax burden. And that is exciting. This is a large-scale project, so not everything, of course, not everything's included in here. Everything will be and is available for you to peruse at your leisure in terms of all of the upgrades district-wide. Again, this is going to be coming in phases over years, so this is, you know, long-term work, and it's gonna take some time. But again, very, very exciting for our district when you're thinking about sustainability, when you're thinking about bringing novel 21st century classroom learning spaces to our kids, when you're thinking about taking care of the upgrades in the inner workings of our facilities. All of those things are being attended to, and again, tax-neutral. So that is extraordinary, and I hope that pleases you as well. We're also looking to establish another capital reserve, which of course has no cost to the taxpayer, but what it does do, as you've seen in past years, is it allows us, it allows the school district, the Board of Education, to make needed changes, capital changes, in our school district throughout our facilities without having to bond. So again, another method, another tool in the toolbox to keep us in a place where we're not looking to potentially raise the levy. And we've utilized that over the last several years. It's worked out well. Look, you know this, whenever anybody walks into our facilities from another school district who's maybe never visited White Plains, oftentimes the folks will be like, wow. That, to me, I like that. That is nice. It's nice to walk into a facility with somebody, or walk into the high school with a reporter for the first time, and just the person just looks around and goes, wow. Because it is a wow. And if you, if you got a chance to, and of course, all school districts are wonderful, and all buildings are wonderful, but if you had a chance to walk into a typical or maybe, you know, a high school, you would very quickly notice that, you know, our facilities stand out. And they stand out because of the investment that you and the community continue to put into the facilities. I mean, these are the people's buildings, they're the children's buildings, they need to stand the test of time, they have stand the test of time. We have buildings that are 100 years old, and you know, this is because of the investment that we made, and we're gonna continue to do that. And so, this year's ballot, we have our Board of Education election, we have our budget, that's 0%. I hate, that always sounds weird, but no tax increase. We have our bond, that is tax-neutral, and then we have the establishment of the capital reserve. That's on the agenda this evening for the Board of Education's consideration and adoption. Of course, we're gonna have a hearing next month, and we will be talking to everybody who will listen to us about the budget and answering questions as always. But the most important thing that you could do is make sure that you and everybody around you, everybody who you know, comes out on May 17th, Tuesday, May 17th, 12:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and participates in the election. I can't tell you to vote for the budget, but I can tell you that this is an extraordinary package and an extraordinary ballot in an extraordinary community. So with that, if anybody has any questions, the Board of Education, by the way, has asked me millions of questions already, so, but if anybody has any additional questions, happy to.
Kane will answer them.
Exactly right, Doc. No? Well, thank you very much. That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Ica. Next, we're at the part of our agenda for public participation. The board will entertain comments from the public on any issue with a time limit of three minutes per person and a maximum time limit of 25 minutes. Please respect the privacy of all individuals and know that our administration would be happy to discuss matters of a more personal nature directly with you. Will there be any public participation tonight? Thank you.
I just wanted to say one thing just from my own perspective on the board about how lucky I feel to be a board member in White Plains and attending our meetings. I have friends who live in other areas who say, you're on the school board? Why? What in God's name? And have you seen what goes on in my district or my area? And I said, well, it doesn't happen here in White Plains. I said, we're a wonderful, diverse district, and people are respectful of one another in our meetings or such. So thank you for allowing me to be on this board and part of this wonderful community.
Thank you, Randy. Well said, and it echoes our sentiments exactly. Next, we'll move on to our summary action items. We have summary action items four through eight. May I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to draw your attention to item 4B, donations. I'd like to thank for their gracious donations. Number one, we have a microwave from Karen Levant for MAS, $236 from various donors for the Lois Van Epp's scholarship.
1,200.
I'm sorry, 1,200, my one's cut off. Apologize. $300 from various donors for the Philip Barnett Memorial Scholarship Fund. And if I may, also, item C, just so everyone is aware, an item C use of facilities, we do have, you know, for those of you who've participated in the past and know the district's policy on facility use, we don't, we don't do religious observances or religious services in our buildings. But you will note that Kingdom Ministers Commission, Inc. has been given facilities used as for performance, a singular performance that will be taking place. So just in case there was any questions about that. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
On our summary action item agenda, there was a special appointment that I do want to point out. We have just approved Jennifer Berganel to be our next clerk of the board, and she's here tonight. Please greet her.
I just wanted to say that I'm very excited for the opportunity to support and serve the board and all the school member people of the White Plains School District. So I know that I have huge shoes to fill, but I'm certainly up for the challenge, and I'm looking forward to meeting as many of the school stakeholders as possible, and just look forward to meeting everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Next, we'll move on to individual action items. The first one is the recommended adoption of the proposed budget for the 2022 to 2023 school year. May I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's a lot of hard work to put the budget together and the many questions that are before, during, and some that'll be after, so just wanted to thank everyone for all of their hard work throughout the district to help us get to this point.
Yeah. It feels really good to say zero, too.
Next, we have the, yeah, bears repeating. What did you say? Next, we have the approval of the establishment of pedagogical and non-pedagogical positions as part of the 2022 and 2020 through 2023 adopted budget. May I have a motion?
Don't move. Second.
Do we have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And anyone who is looking at the agenda can really see that the establishment of these positions really moves this district forward.
Yeah, as previously presented, yes. Next, we're at the part of our meeting where we have our board committee reports. Are there any reports? No, we didn't, we didn't, right?
I'll mention curriculum. We had Jennifer, private bar pole, and Meg, oh my gosh, Meg Doty come present the work that's being done on the science curriculum committee at the elementary level, and I've been fortunate to actually serve on that committee and attend meetings. So we talked about the new science standards, and science is really doing as opposed to, you know, sort of memorizing, which has been more of the traditional, old-fashioned way of doing science. So there are performance expectations, there's the study of phenomena, there is going to be a three-year thoughtful rollout of the new curriculum. We're working on identifying and finalizing a resource for the elementary program. And then for the secondary science and engineering program, Meg Doty did talk about immersion experiences, they had adopted new digital texts, so the high school and secondary level have also moved forward with science as well.
Thank you. And the only thing I'll mention is that I was able to get to the wellness committee meeting, that was the third one. Committee meeting. That was the third one. We're going to break out into subcommittees to discuss various topics. But all things for the health and wellness of our students is being discussed. The lunches, you know, delivery, variety, all that good stuff is being discussed. And I'm just happy to be on that committee.
And I'll also mention the Special Education Subcommittee also met. And we had a presentation about the program at Westchester Community College, which takes place in the afternoons for some of our SAIL students who are in the last two or three years of their high school program. And they've been really doing life skill type work. And so now, we have three students from White Plains and a student from Eastchester as part of a consortium who attend this program. And they have sort of job coaching. They have different classes, personal finance, nutrition and healthy living, workplace readiness. Next year, there may be a computer class and some opportunities for certifications. And they really, you know, we're learning the practical use of skills that align with what they've been doing in our SAIL program in the high school. And now they put them into practice. So it's a really excellent program. Our students are really, you know, they're having that sort of college experience, right? They go there, they have lunch, and then they go to classes. So it's been very successful. We also talked some about how we've budgeted funding that we've received, foundation aid, we've hired new teachers in ICT. We have used art money for circle training and teacher-child interaction therapy at Ridgway and GW. We've done science of reading training. We've used additional art money for the inclusive playground at Highlands as well. So lots of really great things going on.
If I may, just also, I have to give credit to Deb Algard and her team. You know, I was with Dr. Miles, Linda Miles is the president of Westchester County Community College. And we were just talking about this Friday, I'm telling you. We were just talking about this on Friday. And, you know, these partnerships, these relationships that allow our kids to get out into the community and to really have these experiences make all the difference later on. And this is a new partnership. And, you know, we were brainstorming just in the summer, how we'd get going. And, you know, thanks to the hard work and partnership, it's been, it's been good for kids. So really happy about it. Thanks, Deb.
Thank you for that. Anything else to add? Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Welcome to Jennifer Hay Ridge Way. We see you all, every one of you.
I think you win. I think you're winning right now.
I'm one last year, too.
Not that we're remembering.
And it's not really a competition, is it?
Oh, no, it isn't a competition.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, may I have a motion? And may I have a motion to go into exact session to discuss matters of a personnel nature?
Don't move. Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.